Okay, it's seven o'clock and it's time for our Exeter Board Workshop Meeting. This is our regular April meeting where we take the opportunity to review the agenda that we'll be voting on next week. It also gives us a little bit more time as we know to to dig into the details of any of the items on the agenda to get more information if necessary from our administrative team and have more discussions as necessary. So I want to thank those people who are joining us via YouTube. Also, I thank all of our board members in attendance this evening. I think right now I see just about everybody. But a couple of board members, but I'm sure Mr. Fiddler will be joining us shortly. Before we get started, I would like to ask Ann Guidish, our Board Secretary, to help us out with the roll call. For attendance purposes.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mrs. Stratton. Mr. Japina. Dr. McLendon.
Present.
Dr. Hamburger.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Ahrens.
Present.
Dr. Herring.
Here.
And Mr. Fiddler. Five are currently present.
Mrs. Guidish, I think Mrs. Stratton was unmuted and muted herself to respond, so she is here.
Oh, I see. I know. Okay.
I didn't even hear my name. I apologize. I was having some issues.
Six board members are present.
Six board members are present. Great. Thank you. I just want to announce before we get started that we did have an executive.
There's seven. I'm looking at seven. Dr. Hamburger, Mrs. Wilson.
You're correct. You're correct.
Sorry. I just wanted to make sure before we, for the record.
It is seven. You're correct.
We're waiting on Mr. Fiddler, which would be eight.
Yeah, and Mr. Japina not with us this evening. I do want to announce before we get started with our meeting, we did have an executive session on April 7th for the purpose of personnel matters. And before we start as well, I just want to say it again, and thank you to all of our staff or administration and all the families out there who are all working hand in hand, shoulder to shoulder to get through. You know, this really unusual unprecedented time. Thank everybody for their patience, their hard work, their cooperation. And from what I've seen, it's just been really an outstanding effort on everybody's part. I do want to turn it over to the meeting, over to Dr. Phillips, to maybe give us Dr. Phillips, any updates that you think might be helpful for the board in terms of where we are right now.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. I think the one thing we want to cover and maybe clear up some things, and it was covered in the Curriculum Committee right before this. I know there has been a lot of chatter, I guess, about what are we doing for graduation for our seniors? Mr. Campbell was on the last call and he may be listening to this, so he can correct me if I don't say something right. What we're trying to do is we are not making any decisions at this point. What we're trying to do is hold our options open. We don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, next week, or next month. We're all keeping our fingers crossed that, you know, graduation can still be graduation on the date it was intended to be. But if that doesn't turn out to be the case, we are and have been planning options. I want to thank some of the parents that have responded to me with some ideas. I passed them on to Mr. Campbell. Mr. Campbell is putting together a team of staff members that will be meeting, and I believe they actually met today, but they'll be continuing to meet and to sort of hammer out an idea of what options are out there for our seniors. I know a survey has gone out, seniors, if anyone is listening that has a senior, please have them answer the survey. We want to get as many options and ideas as we can. We will be collecting all those ideas. The team will put together the ideas that are, maybe I would say, the most wanted ideas or the most desired ideas from our seniors. And then we will start planning those options again with a, an approach that will give us flexibility as well as give our seniors the idea that it will happen. What I mean by that is we can always plan for our graduation as it was meant to be. But if that's not the case, we may be able to plan for something for August. We may be able to plan for something further down the line. We may be able to plan, one of the ideas that was floated was a parade. So they're going to be looking at all options. They're going to be making sure we take the input from the seniors who are most affected by this. And then we will get out the ideas and we will get out the plan with more than enough time for everyone to participate. So I think that's the one thing we wanted to really focus on tonight, to make sure everyone was clear that we have not made any decisions. That we are looking for input from our seniors and their families and that we will be planning in stages with contingencies to make sure that we have the best plan available for our seniors.
Thanks. Any board members have any questions before we move on with the agenda?
Yeah. Bob, could we see a copy of that survey?
I can get Mr. Campbell to send you a copy. Yes, I believe he said it was out today and it's going to be out till Friday or next Friday, but I will head him to send you a copy.
Great, thank you.
As well as the board.
Okay, so I will work into the agenda. I'm not sure if we have available a copy of the agenda that might be able to be shared on the screen. If so, maybe Joe or Joe, we might be able to see that. There it is. Thank you. So we're going to start with public comments. That's our opportunity for folks who are participating either through YouTube, the streaming video, or the, or sending in any emails to have a chance to make comments for the board. And I'll ask Mr. Mr. Way, I believe, who might have access to those comments if they're coming in this time.
That is correct. I am the one who will be managing the questions at this point. We do not have any questions. If I do get any during the meeting, I will let you know if we want to address them at the end again.
I think that's probably a good idea. I think maybe we'll, if there is any questions at the end, we'll double check for that. So we'll just move forward with our agenda and the first item on the agenda is Mrs. Renee Muster, our Principal over at Jacksonwald Elementary School, and she has a presentation for us, so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Muster. And thank you for your presentation. Looking forward to it.
Good evening. I'm Renee Muster, Principal at Jacksonwald Elementary School, and it is with great pleasure that I'm with you virtually this evening. This is a pre-recorded presentation, but I will be available after the presentation to answer any of your questions. So let's get started. I'd like to first start by telling you a little bit about where we are moving from school to home with online learning. This is what it looks like at Jacksonwald, but it doesn't just start at Jacksonwald. It was not without the help from my colleagues and the district administration that helped guide this process to be such a huge success. Working with instruction, attendance, grading, communication, we are working as a team and I can't speak any more highly than I can of my colleagues with the great collaboration that we have been working together to make, to build consistency and to offer support among K-4 within our buildings, but across the entire district. It has been such a pleasure. So as you can see, our Schoology courses here notice that as administrators, we can not only be in our own building, but also in other buildings, so it's a great way for our teachers to collaborate as well as some of these new documents that we have been formulating to help provide us with how we might issue grading, how we might do communication, how we are looking at attendance a little bit differently. And I can say across the board, as administrators, we have all come together to help support each other, and I am just so grateful and humbled to be a part of this administrative team. Not only as administrators are we collaborating, but we are collaborating among teachers. Our school counselors are working together across all three elementary buildings to provide lessons on a daily basis for our students and be available for families when needed. Our grade level teams are making connections where they're all working together to support the entire grade level of students. Instructional connections, some things I'd like to showcase is right here towards the left of the screen. You will see exactly, I'm just moving myself, you will see exactly what teachers see when they, or sorry, parents see when they open the Schoology courses. You'll see the ones that are graded out. That means they're not published yet, so parents cannot see them. They're only looking at the week at hand and announcements are usually posted here for teachers and, I'm sorry, for parents and for students from their teachers. Also, we have great resources here, YouTube videos where Mrs. Chromis is singing the number song and students are doing the number Macarena. Second grade are working with great math programs and here in fourth grade, they're presenting a slideshow and everything is so easily accessible for students. So want to give a big shout out to Dan Wilczek and Missy Dow for how hard they've been working with our staff and Karen Denunzio, who really helped formulate how these courses can look for our students. Our specialists are making connections. It is not without a doubt that they can't continue singing and moving and drawing and doing all of the arts. So each of our art specialists have been working nonstop to help provide a cohesive specialist curriculum and they're working across all three of the elementary buildings. So talk about a great collaboration. What's the new normal? Well, we have our students who continue to do morning announcements and I have to say, it's quite a joy to wake up and look at and view each of our students giving the morning announcements. I have to give a shout out to Mrs. Mel, who continues to help support these students so they can do the morning announcements from home. And I'm always curious to know what's on the lunch menu, which means what's in the parents pantry, of course. Our student connections, very different ways that we are connecting, but it's working. So we have virtual lunches for students. We offer homebound resources for students and I love the pictures of the Legos that you see right here. Our second grade gifted challenge, which I think is so great that Mrs. Walker is utilizing Legos and they had to pick 100 different Legos, but they can only stay with those Lego pieces and they continually have different challenges that they have to meet each week. It's a great long-term project, but have, just using your brain much differently. So some great projects there. Some student connections that we have. Teachers, if you could see, they are sending messages to their students, little poems and things to get them excited for our online learning. We're going to continue doing what we are rolling out in 2020, 20 books in 2020. Here's a little kindergartner who just completed those 20 books and that parent continues to share that information with us. We did a whole staff read aloud and this was the very end of the read aloud that a parent shared with me. I thought I'd share it with you. This is my favorite part of the presentation and the volume doesn't work, but if you could see here, all of the staff, they're all voicing how much they miss and wish to see their students real soon and it's just really nice to see all four of the children. Read aloud, what do you do with the chants? So it's so great that you see all four siblings sitting there enjoying the read aloud together. In some more difficult connections, but not impossible, we have our ELs, we have our special education and our intervention groups. And I know that's a huge question. How are we servicing these students who really need some extra support? Well, I can't say enough what teachers have been doing is above and beyond. Mrs. Gerlick called every single EL family in our building and made sure that they knew how to either get devices or knew how to sign into Schoology. She has been checking with them endlessly. She has not only helped them sign up for those materials, but have done it for them as well. And daily schedules, some parents don't even think about a daily schedule, but just to have a routine, some of our teachers have provided those things as well as some online math resources. And just as I'm talking to you and you see my screen, our teachers are utilizing this kind of protocol with the students as well. So talking them through the math problem so that they can be successful in learning as well as signing up time so that they can meet and do check-ins with them. We are really working to provide those interventions and giving those students some specific instruction so that they could be successful and not frustrated in their learning. And this is really what our instruction looks like. So as you could see here, just as you see me on the screen and I'm moving around, you could see teachers doing math lessons, doing some ELA lessons, mindfulness exercises, read alouds, as well as a first grade poem. So we're utilizing this technology in many different formats. Now, we have to keep the school spirit alive. So thanks to Reifton's APT, we adopted this across all of our elementary buildings. We did a virtual spirit week and the kids loved it. Parents were flooding my emails with pictures and honestly, I couldn't find enough. They were great pictures. They made my day just looking at them, but from your spirit ware to game night, to outdoor play, to baking, to luau. Not only did our whole families participate, but our teachers participated. We had a great time really celebrating our love for our school and our spirit. And because of that, a teacher, actually not a teacher, a parent reached out to me and said, hey, how about we do a virtual talent week? So we added this the next week and it was so neat to see the videos that were flooding my Google account with show tunes and magic tricks and how to's and of course, I love the magic trick that's right above me where the little boy made his sister disappear. Wouldn't some little brothers like to make their younger siblings disappear? But it was just such a, it's a cute activity and it was such a great way to really make that homeschool connection. And what is most important is that feedback. If we always want to improve, feedback is the one way that we can improve. And this is some positive feedback that came to our teacher and we just really appreciate that because our job is to serve our students and support our families. And how are we doing it? Are we doing it well? And if not, what do we need to change? So it's good to get that feedback. And of course, it's important to make staff connections, not only about information that deals with learning and social emotional growth, but also just who we are, our self-care method. So I utilized Voxer, which is a walkie-talkie tool. It is, you could see, we do some like fun activities like our Voxeroki, or I post a picture and say, tell me what this picture means to you. And of course, we use our Jacksonwald Journal, which is our Samora's newsletters to communicate important information that's happening across the district. But this is a great way for us to keep in contact with each other. I am so used to walking around the building and saying hello and having some conversations with teachers and now I don't have that. So I have this opportunity to connect with them virtually and other ways. And of course, we use Google Hangout where we do virtual meetings just as, as we are right now. And parent connection. This is another great modality. I also like to use Facebook, but really the parent link is a great tool as well as YouTube and I do use Jacksonwald Newsletter that I send out monthly. Now I'm pretty much bimonthly so that I can make sure that I am connecting with our families. And how am I making those connections? Well, as an administrator, I want to connect with my colleagues and make sure that we're always on the same page and we're hearing the same message. So we meet weekly as well as we have our district admin meetings, our Schoology trainings. I try to be involved in those. I'm doing Monday mornings with Mrs. Muster, since I can't greet students off the bus or say goodbye before they leave from school. I like to welcome them to the start of their week. So I do a breakfast with Mrs. Muster and it's a live Facebook, which then I translate onto my YouTube channel and send it out through a parent link so that students who are not on Facebook can also get a chance to see it. We have our weekly committee and faculty meetings, so I touch base with staff on a weekly basis regarding information from school and then weekly IEP meetings and principal lunch chats that I have with each of the grade levels so that I could just connect with them. And it's so cool to see them with their families, maybe even their furry friends, or sometimes they like to introduce their little baby sister. So it's been a pleasure getting to know the students on a different level. And of course, this is the final, which is one of my favorite pictures because I think it says how we are all feeling. We would all love to be in school, but I have to say that this experience and this situation is really causing us to think outside the box, which is definitely a challenge for all of us, but I see that we are making some great successes. So thank you so much for letting me share a little bit about our building report as we are meeting and working virtually together. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Have a great evening. Good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Muster. That was a, that was a great presentation. It's kind of funny seeing the juxtaposition, going from your video to seeing you here now live. But it was, it was really well done. And I, the one question I had was, can you say a little bit about the students in your school that maybe had some problems getting on to technology? I mean, what are there, are there kids who are still unable to access, you know, the, you know, the instruction from teachers and, and if so, I mean, how are we trying to get beyond that?
Well, I can say that I have been in contact with numerous families, especially I think on Good Friday, a lot of families were actually calling me and sending me emails to call them, which was fine. During that time, what was really great is the one thing they would say is like, we're getting so many emails from everyone and that's a good thing. Like, we're really trying to communicate. I think the district itself has been so well established with making sure that they're getting the information out and links to information that for some parents, and this is how I say it, we retain 10% of what we see, right? So when we're looking at that pyramid of learning, we're all getting this visual information. So we're really focusing on our eyes to, to be like the gatekeepers of all this information that's coming to us at such a rapid time because there's so many changes. So parents were like, I don't understand. I don't understand. And they really just needed someone to talk them through it. So thankfully, from the parent links, I was able to like pull them up on my phone, talk them through it. For some parents, just as Mrs. Gerlick did with her EL parents, I actually put the the Chromebook order in for, for them while they're on the phone with me. I talked them through it and that's, I think, that's the part of the connection. Like, how can we continue to stay personally connected so all of our kids are serviced? As Dr. Winter was saying earlier, we don't want to make technology or devices a barrier as to why they can't. So the teachers have been so good at connecting with them. So that second week that we were still on like phase one, teachers were already emailing me. I haven't heard from, I haven't heard from. So then I send personal messages out to those parents to say, hey, your teacher's trying to connect. Let's just connect with you. And I followed up too with a parent link, just my voice saying, how are you doing, parents? This is when we were moving into phase two, like remember to self-care and also if you need anything, if you don't have a device, reach out to me. So after those parent links were coming, I was coming in with a personal link to try to help support that. And I think after this first week when we have, this is the attendance week, we could really see who hasn't been on. And then we're going to, with my school counselor and our our administrative assistant, our attendance secretary, we're going to reach out to those families and say, what are your concerns? So we're going to continue to say like, we, we noticed you haven't been on there. What concerns do you have and how can we help support you?
So, so if, if students aren't, aren't, aren't at this point fully accounted for, there's a plan in place for making sure that there's outreach and communication and efforts to assist them to get back, to get on, onto the system.
Absolutely. Yes. As a matter of fact, I know that even parents, if they haven't gotten a device, I know that they could still submit. And Joe and his team have been very, very punctual about making sure. I had a parent who had five children. She said, she has a kid in every grade from kindergarten to, to fourth grade in her, in her home. The next day she called me and she's like, I got devices. So that's how quickly the turnaround is. The IT team has been outstanding.
Questions from other board members?
Yeah. Dr. Muster, do we have a sense at this point, not just at your school, but at district wide of reading a lot of stories nationally about the digital gap? Do we have a sense of how many students or how many families are not connected, either because there's no device in the home or there is inadequate internet service?
I can say from my perspective, I don't have the answer to that, but I do know that a survey has gone out through Joe Way and his team. And as a result of that, there have been numerous times where they could either sign up and come and pick up a device. And like I said, we're trying to meet every family that we can. So depending on if that number's not working, if their email is working, like the teachers, I can say from my, in my school and from what my colleagues have also shared is that as soon as we find out we can't get ahold of someone, we try to go deeper because if you go into Skyward and you click on the parent name, sometimes there's additional information, how to contact that parent. So we have been reaching out endlessly and I know my secretaries have been good about following up with that. So I can't really comment across the entire district, but I can say that as soon as we find out, we're on it to try and help support that family.
Okay. Any comment from either Patrick or Bob about?
What I would add to that, Mr. Fiddler, is, is you heard in the conversation from Dr. Winters, once we get done with this week, we'll start using attendance. Then we'll become much more clear who needs to be reached out to. At this, at this point, we're hearing 95 to 97% attendance. But again, we don't know if that 3% is because they're not connected or if they just, they're not going on. Once we have our attendance, it's going to be a little easier to, to, to get to the bottom of that as well as, I know there's a two-week, from what I understand from Mr. Way, a two-week lag in service electric. And we're aware of some of those names. So there may be just a connectivity issue at this point. But we're working through that. And again, the, as, as Mrs. Muster said, the IT department has been sending surveys out. They've been, you know, by the hour contacting people. So they've been on top of it the best we can. Mr. Way, you want to say a little more maybe?
Sure. Or we're, we're still actually distributing. We had a session today. We have another session on Thursday. A lot of it is just difficulty in getting parents to answer the call or to have a time that's, you know, mutually beneficial for both of us to get together and get the device handed off. We have about 20 machines that are configured and ready to go for, for Thursday. We're getting between five and 10 additional device requests every day. So we're also still, you know, scouring devices, getting stuff cleaned and prepped and getting things ready to, to fill the need. On the front of hotspots and, and internet connectivity, I was able to get some hotspots. In fact, I'm sitting here configuring them as we speak. I have, I have a hotspot right here that I was just finishing to configure before we started here. So we'll be able to address some of the internet needs for some of our neediest folks that don't have service electric with, with hotspots. Again, we don't have a ton. There has been a nationwide crunch to get these devices and so we were able to get a couple. So we'll be reaching out to the families that we've heard from, from principals and guidance counselors that are in the most need. We will also be ready, prepared to look at that data of the students that aren't showing up to kind of determine who they are, what their needs are, what their equipment needs are, what their internet connectivity is. So, you know, it's really, we have a lot of surveys. Again, like, like Renee said, there's a lot of information people are getting, you know, they're drinking from a fire hose right now with information. And so a lot of stuff is getting missed. So when they do get it and they do find their resource and we're, we're very thankful to have the principals and counselors and teachers doing this work and getting it done. We're getting a lot more information the further we go along. And I think today being the first instructional day, really, you know, we should start seeing some more information and more feedback and using that attendance data to build, to fill in the gaps will be huge for us.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Thank, thank you all. I wonder if, could we get a report since, I think you said Monday is attendance day? Perhaps at the meeting a week from tonight on just where we stand with. Perhaps at the meeting a week from tonight on just where we stand with getting everyone connected?
Yes, I can.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Moser?
Well, this is Yuri. Mrs. Moser, I really appreciate all the hard work you're doing here. This is a, an amazing job considering that this is something that we don't really have a curriculum for as of yet because these are children that, that are, had more visual aids and things like that. So do you see there any challenge on the next, let's say, three months of anything that may have an issue in terms of building up enough curriculum for the kids?
That's a great question. And thank you for your kind remarks. I, I'm humbled by it, but I, I don't stand alone because it's, it's truly a team effort and we are, it's uncharted territory, right? We don't know what to expect. We don't know who and how much or how little the kids need. We just know at the K to four, they need that guidance. And I just was in a meeting today and one teacher is like, the parent was reaching out to me and they were asking me what to do. And I could tell them what to do, but I'm upset because that's my job. I want to do that job, right? So it's, it's this, it's such a humbling experience, but yet it, I think it's going to really bring us together as, as a district, it's going to bring us together with our families. And I think it's a case by case. What I'm hoping is that through all these various connections we're making and how we're working so hard together to, again, Karen Denenzio is a coach that sees us from K to, to 12, pretty much. And she's, her in that, in these meetings helps us to, okay, what is it that we can measure, right? So we're looking at report cards. What is it that we can measure that can be enough to say to this next teacher, this is what that, that child can do, right? So we're having these conversations, but it's not just, it's not just building level. Like, it's, it's all of us together because it, so anytime I, I get information, I'm sharing that with Dr. Holler and Mr. Isselman and Mrs. Willier. And we're trying to like figure out how is it that, what can, what could we say? How could this work? So like, it's, it's really case by case. I don't have a, an answer, but I can tell you, we're all wondering what is it going to look like? It's almost like everyone right now is a first-year principal because we never closed out school like this. So it's, we're all doing this together and we're going to make it work the best we can.
Got you. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sounds like we're wrapping up with the questions. So, Mrs. Moser, thanks again. Excellent presentation, exciting things going on despite the, all the problems that we're experiencing. This is, seems like we're making the very best we can, doing the very best we can with technology and the creativity and the hard work of the staff and, and obviously your efforts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're going to move on in our agenda. And our next, our next presentation this evening is Mrs. Guidish, and she'll be covering the general fund for five-year projection and also updating us on the 2021 general fund budget. So I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Guidish.
All right. Thank you. Last week, after our business function committee meeting, Dr. Hember, I think you had asked about some information on how the COVID-19 will impact general fund revenue. So I'm going to start with that. And then I'll move into the five-year projection and update the board on the refunding timeline. So, next slide. Late last week, the Independent Fiscal Office of Pennsylvania had posted their, an update on revenue projections. And basically, they had looked at two different scenarios. A six-week closure and then a 10-week closure. Now, obviously, you know, with schools closing through the end of the year, you know, that may, and we don't know where we're headed. So their update on May 20th may reflect different numbers. In any event, I spent time over the weekend trying to understand what they were projecting. Next slide. They provided some data on decline in wages and salaries. The scenario two, which is the 10-week closure, a 1.7% decline. I mean, that's not directly related to what would happen to our EIT, but I use that, you know, as a guide in, you know, making a reduction in EIT revenue. Net profits doesn't necessarily equate to gross receipts with business privilege tax, but kind of use that as a guide as well. Next slide. Is a chart of their projections, economic growth rates under scenario one and two. Next slide. So basically for 2021, they have revenues rebounding, not to the level that they would have without this pandemic. But they're assuming a rapid V-shaped recovery. So we will, time will tell whether that will actually happen. Next slide. So what I've adjusted at this point in time, number one, the collection rate, real estate tax collection rate. I was using 98%. I've only reduced it to 97.5%, but that reduces that revenue line item by 239,000. That chart shows the history. In a web conference today, a webcast today with PASBO, they kept saying, you know, look back at 2008, 2009, what had happened. It's really hard to know whether we would go to a 96.6% collection rate. There's a lot of variables when it comes to, you know, who are your taxpayers? So at this point, 97.5, 239,000 reduction. Next slide. So other areas of local revenue, which will be impacted. And this again is just my first look at it. Earned income tax, I used, you know, the guidance, reducing EIT wages. So for 1920 and 2021, I reduced by 70,000 in each year. I know there's things being circulated out there. Dr. Phillips had emailed something that he received through their, his, one of his regular meetings with superintendents. And some school districts are already seeing the impact. So the point is we have to watch as the collections come in for the month of April as well as May. Real estate transfer tax. I did, I do anticipate through the last three months of this year that it will go down quite a bit. 60,000. And for next year, at this point, I'm using a 25% decline. And that was really based upon looking back after the Great Recession. That's 125,000. Business privilege tax. I use the net profit assumption, whether that's accurate or not. At this point, I'm using an $80,000 reduction for 2021 in business privilege tax. Delinquent real estate taxes will go up because the, what's turned over will go up because the tax collection rate will go down. But what will be collected by the Tax Claim Bureau is, is another story. Typically, you receive a, a lot of your delinquent collections or a significant amount within a year. But under these circumstances, it may take longer to collect them. So I did not change that figure at all. That remains at 900,000. Next slide. This chart compares what we looked at on March 31st and where we are today. The current year, a reduction of 179,000 approximately. And for fiscal 2021, I'm showing a reduction local revenue of a little over 500, 500,000. Next slide. I'm sure a lot of you have heard about the federal funds that are coming through, through the CARES Act. This is a slide summarizing estimates of amounts for Berks County Schools. And Exeter is approximately 357,000, but it's important to understand that this is just an estimate. And it, it may very well change. And that is not incorporated into the budget at this point because a lot of things are unknown. Next slide. These are some comments from Hannah Barrick of PASBO, the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials. She's the legislative liaison. And she basically cautions everyone on, you know, wait and see what happens with this, this funding. Because a, a lot of things need to play out, especially in terms of the state budget and whether they will fill their in state funding gaps with this federal stimulus money, which is something they did back in 2000, the era period, 2009, 10, and 11. Next slide. So we still need to work on budget revisions. One thing I did change in the expense side was at the business function committee meeting, we reduced capital improvements by $100,000. That's the general fund. I have to, I'm working through the expense estimate again for 1920 to reflect a reduction in areas based upon the school closure. And again, changes in revenue assumptions will happen because there's new guidance coming out and watching the trends. And then there's the issue of the federal stimulus funds and how the state budget will change. Again, next week, we'll take a look at, besides any updates to our general fund budget, the reduction items. Next slide. The next few slides are from the webcast that PASBO presented today. I did email the school board the link to the recording as well as the PowerPoint. Basically, what we know is that there's a lot of unknowns at this point and really just they were trying to give us guidance and a checklist of what we should be thinking about. Next slide. So again, just reiterating the things that I've already started to think about and make adjustments for. But there may be smaller things. What's going to happen to our extracurricular revenues? And also assessment appeals may go back up again. Apparently, there's ads being placed out there by legal firms on, legal firms to encourage people to file for an assessment appeal. Next slide. Again, this is data, historical data statewide where it shows earned income tax and the dip that it took in 910 of a negative 1.3. Next slide. Interest earnings. Again, I have to revisit this number because the projection they've done statewide is a dramatic decline. Average stars to 400,000 from approximately 700,000, but that may be a little optimistic on my part. So I will revisit that. Next slide. And that's blank. So the checklist. The state has many decisions to make. They're talking about maybe the state will adopt a six-month budget. The school districts will have to adopt a 12-month budget, obviously, and it will have to take place by June 30th. So there's a lot of interplay. There may be a lot of interplay between state funding, netting, and federal fund. Again, we don't know how the CARES Act is all going to play out. Next slide. So really a five-year projection at this point is difficult because, you know, I've built in some of these numbers that I just talked about. But, you know, not knowing what the trends will be. You know, it's just going to be, we'll, I'll be looking at this with the board up until final adoption of the budget in June. So next slide. And as far as developing a projection, really you're looking at your, you know, your drivers of your revenue increases. And just going to open up my PowerPoint and apologize for the small print, but it can't be helped. Okay. So the slide 20 that we're on, the property tax, this really reflects raising taxes for the five years to the index, to our adjusted index, which would be from 3.3% to 4%. One word about the adjusted index or the index itself, because it's based upon wages, employment cost index, as well as the SOL statewide average weekly wage, that's expected to go down. So rather than seeing indexes of 2.6, which was the basic index, 2.6, our adjusted is 3.3, we may be seeing indexes of 1.95. You know, an average. So that will go down because again, it's based upon wages. Next slide. This slide, a little more clear, it raising to the index, our adjusted index. The millage over a five-year period would spike up to 39.78 mills. And it would generate between 1.5 and 2.1 million or over a five-year period, 9.2 million in additional tax revenue. Next slide. So other assumptions in a projection of revenue, EIT 1.8%, this privilege 2.4. Again, these are trends, trend-based. State subsidies is based upon what we've currently experienced. What's in the, still in the budget for 2021 is what was part of the governor's budget back in February. You know, besides the ones listed here with increases, all of the sources are held flat. Next slide. Wage increase assumptions in developing projections for wages. Anywhere from, you know, 2.5 to 3, some areas 1%. The teacher lane change cost column movement is $100,000 a year. Next slide. We also build into the model salary adjustments for retirements. That's the top section of the slide. It's the difference in wages when replacing with newer staff. There's also assumptions that can be made as far as reducing full-time equivalents, FTEs. But this, these stopping changes will be dependent upon what we do with secondary class size, which will be addressing throughout next year and program changes. We've talked extensively about staffing ratios and really looking at program changes and where we can be more efficient in our staffing. But we also need to, not only professional staff, but we have to look at all support staffing. all support staffing levels. Next slide. On slide twenty five. Benefit assumptions, seven percent in healthcare. Three percent in dental and workers come. And at the very bottom lists retirement rates. And again, not a word about retirement rates, we may see these rates go up. Especially if the the earnings of Peasars, you know, are plummeting as well. So in order to keep up with benefit, retirement benefits, these contribution rates may go up as as well. Next slide. Slide twenty six. So the expense projections basically using CPI, super price index. Again, charter school tuition, no change to the current funding method. We don't know where that legislation is at this point. Bond refunding savings are not reflected. And other assumptions, what we currently have in this year into the twenty twenty one budget remains through the rest of the projection model. Next slide. Yeah, I do apologize for the size of this, but not much I can do about it. Okay. The first two scenarios. The first one on slide. Excuse me. Slide twenty seven, no tax increase during the five year period and you can see after twenty twenty three, we've pretty much used up fund balance. This is very unlikely because a lot has to happen. You know, but obviously we are concerned about a continued lack of state funding for education. And also very concerned about increasing taxes and the burden on our local taxpayers to try and keep up with expense increases. And once you have time to examine these slides, you'll see that the increases are in wages and benefits. But even with you know, increases that are reasonable. And you know, comparable to what other districts are offering, it's still a burden. There's just, you know, the deficit keeps growing by the increase in wages and benefits. Next slide, twenty eight reflects raising to the index, which would over a period of five years, thirty four point two mills to thirty nine point seven eight. Again, that obviously helps to reduce the deficit by year five, the excess of expense over revenue would be down to five hundred thousand and still maintain a fund balance of about ten point eight million. Next slide. Another scenario, looking at the unadjusted index, which is not using our our bump for our market value aid ratio. We do receive a bump because we're not a particularly wealthy district. But again, we're able to, that scenario still has deficits of about two point three million, but at least it's providing enough revenue that the the bleed is not as as dramatic. Next slide. This is a scenario of two percent annually over a five year period, raising mills thirty three point seven seven to thirty six point five six. And again, these scenarios do not include any dramatic change in in FTEs. But again, by twenty twenty five, fund balance will have been depleted. So I'm looking at a scenario of two percent millage increase and staff reductions of ten FTEs, and this is hypothetical because a lot of work has to be done to examine staffing ratios, program, especially at the secondary level and possibly at the elementary level as well. But utilizing this data and again, having to look at, you know, a lot of different positions, administrators, professionals, support. And again, as I said, this is hypothetical, but this is something that it may look like over the next five years. So ten positions FTEs would amount to about seven hundred fifty thousand dollar reduction in wage and healthcare costs. Next slide. Thirty two. So incorporating that your scenario starts to look a little more manageable. Of deficits, you know, around two point four, down to one point seven million. But obviously, a lot of work needs to be done. Again, I'll reiterate if the state continues. You know, the the trend of very little funding, if our special education costs continue to rise and if our benefit costs, we really need to get all of that under control. And we need to our, control our contract wages as well. Next slide is enrollment that I prepared based upon our recent trends. We're looking kind of, excuse me, flat over the next few years and then declining about fifty per year in the twenty three through twenty five. Next slide. This reflects the change in district and district enrollment. That's the orange line and the blue line reflects the difference in FTE. And the point in this slide is to illustrate that the district has reduced FTEs over the years as our enrollment has declined. And we will continue to do that and again, you know, looking at program and what we really can afford to offer. Next slide. This is looking at each building and it really helps administration to identify trends within a building and where we need to drill down further. The black line, for example, looking at the the junior high had a decline in enrollment of ten percent during the period of two thousand fourteen fifteen. Excuse me, two, yeah, twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen. But the reduction in FTE was less than, you know, was around five percent. So there's a gap there. It wasn't. We're declining enrollment, but our staffing wasn't declining at the same rate. And there's reasons for that. And that's why we look at metrics like this, you know, it could have to do with a special ed classroom. You know, that's why adding more staff in certain areas where it's needed. So this is the kind of data we've been looking at for for months and we will continue to do it, you know, definitely over the next few years. Finally, the last slide is a
And I have a quick question about that slide. Can you go back to that one? So what does that mean for Jackson Mall there?
It means they actually had an increase in their enrollment in their building over that period.
But they didn't get more staff?
But they, actually, they had got more staff than yeah, the staff had increased by
And I believe those are the special ed classes that we put in there.
Correct. And do we also have the ESL? Yeah, so yeah, there was an increase in enrollment and also an increase in staff, but the staff increased at a higher rate. But again, this is data also that's reported to PDE and where their home base is. So again, drilling down to figuring out why, you know, certain buildings have such a gap. The last slide is a timeline. I emailed the board, I believe, yesterday. And speaking with Jamie Schlesinger, they're doing an RFP for bank proposals. Back in two thousand fifteen, we did a bank loan for refunding and it was very successful. So those are due May first. But we're still moving ahead with the resolution on the agenda for next Tuesday for the board to approve. If the bank loan proposals are not attractive or favorable, we'll move ahead with the rating call. And then continue on with the whole process of you know, pricing, you know, a bondage, a bond issuance. Now, the the second phase is we'll start in June with the discussion and the decision on whether to issue new money. I know we talked about that and possibly not doing that at this point. And again, just following through on there, but I did want to make the board aware that we're getting banking proposals. So if if we do go with a bank loan, a rating call will not be necessary. Are there any questions?
And I have some general questions. On top of that, you know, I think I'll start out with some comments here, but I do want to ask some questions and you know what, actually, before I do this, did you mean questions about the timeline related to the bond or did you mean about the entire presentation?
Anything.
Okay. Well, you know, first off, thank you for putting this together and for looking through a lot of this. I definitely appreciate it. And I know, I think the rest of the board does as well. I think, you know, my biggest takeaway from this is that our our deficit that we were already anticipating with where our expenses were going to be at and where our revenues were going to be at before the the virus closures hit was significant. And I think that we're over two million dollars now and potentially could be reaching close to three million dollars if I'm correct about that. You know, originally, the Business Functions Committee had pegged a target of eighty million dollars. And we expected, I think, our 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 tax revenue, our state revenue and our federal revenue to be somewhere in the ballpark of seventy eight with some change around there so that we'd be looking at a deficit somewhere in the ballpark of one point five million. As we're getting closer to this, I guess my instinct is that we have to identify a greater amount of cuts, which is definitely something that I think for what I've been talking about this year has been, is new for the administration. And I I apologize for things changing like this. And you know, I think it's a little bit out of our control at this point. With with that being said, one of the things that I want to try and hone in on is how much we have to go to maybe get to an acceptable level of deficit. And I I guess that question is, you know, what is an acceptable level of budget deficit on our income and outflow for the year? And along that, you know, my question for you and one, one of a few here is where would our fund balance have to fall for our bond rating to be affected?
You know, I'm not sure, in my discussions with Jamie, even before the COVID nineteen, the concern about having a deficit last year a little under seven hundred thousand and adopting a budget this year with with the deficit. You know, he he doesn't think that, you know, one or two years would cause the rating to go down. He might be put on a watch.
Okay.
So and there and there's always reasons for deficits. There's some portion is one time spending. So it may just be an issue of being put on a watch.
Okay. So do you think that that is, in your judgment, a comfortable assumption for us to make going forward that passing a budget with a deficit this year would likely not result in a bond rating decrease? I might have said that in a lot more words than it needed to be, but I I think you got the gist of my question there.
You know, I don't know what their mindset is going to be now with COVID nineteen. And I don't know that Jamie knows either.
Okay.
You know, it's it's hard to answer that, you know, what they what they would say. And you know, I really, they ask, we, I do provide the five year projection and I do provide scenarios that would show us making progress towards balancing revenue and expense. And that's what we need to do.
Okay.
That's the bottom line. So that information is provided to them. But with all the uncertainty, you know, surrounding revenues, I'm not sure how they're going to view that.
Okay.
Sure, that'll be a lot of the discussion on how we're going to deal with it.
Would you think that we could have answers to that before we have to make an up or down vote on the budget at the end of the school year?
And the answer to what what's an acceptable level of deficit?
Or or an indication from the rating agencies about where their mind is about some of those questions?
I'll talk to Jamie and see what the discussions have been in more recent rating calls or if there's some upcoming ones in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
To see the direction.
Because I think that's going to be important for us to understand as we move forward, because I think as as you've said, and correct me if I'm wrong at any part here. But our bond rating is critical to protect because as we move into the future, it's going to be increasingly important for us to have a good bond rating if we have the need to borrow additional funds in in future years to get ahead or stay on top of our capital improvements that we need. And without that, we would have to supply either money from the general fund or we would have to borrow at less desirable rates, which ultimately affects how much we're going to have to levy in terms of taxes at this point. Would you say that that's a fair summary of that?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess my other question to the board is really going to be, you know, what is an acceptable level or lack thereof of tax increase for this year? And after that, I think we need to make a judgment about how large that deficit that's going to be left is acceptable. And within that, we need to make additional cuts, I think, to reach an acceptable level of deficit for where the board's desire is. And I think those two decisions about what is an acceptable level of fund balance and what is an acceptable level of tax increase or lack thereof is going to set out how much is left in that middle. And you know, I don't, I don't know if tonight we can get some discussion around that, but I think it's really important for our administration to have as much time ahead of time to try and respond effectively to what the board's desire is around that. Because I I really think that we're going to need to make additional Because I I really think that we're going to need to make additional cuts from that $80 million target. And I think that's very unfortunate because I know that the administration has been working hard and is nearly there and has some expectations to meet that. And you know, we're making it, what I'm suggesting makes it harder for them. To meet some of those targets amidst a lot of other work that they're doing. But I think it's necessary and I'd love to hear the opinion of some of my colleagues and see if there's agreement around that.
I would just like to say, after John's comments a couple of weeks ago. That I agree with him and I think that this is not the year that we would raise taxes. For our taxpayers, so many of our neighbors have lost jobs, they're being laid off. And we are, we're going to ask for their tax money in July. Which we are hopeful, of course, that things would turn around by then. But the problem is we don't know. So I I am in favor of a 0% tax increase.
Yeah, this is curious. I'm in the same position, you know, I I feel that they're, you know. All of our hands are kind of tied right now at this point. We don't know what's going to happen in July, but yeah, there's a lot of people that are really suffering right now. And I don't think that we necessarily need to put another strain on their back by raising taxes at all. You know, but we we also need for everyone to be participating in that understanding. And I guess we'll talk about that at some other time about that part. But but I I just feel like we definitely need to, you know, try to see if we can tighten the belt a little bit. In terms of making sure there's no tax increase because this area is really suffering. So the whole nation's suffering at the same time, so this is not, we're not.
Hunter, you had mentioned about deeper, making some deeper cuts. And I know administration is doing everything they can to trim off things, you know, but those aren't like huge amounts. Like where where do you see? Do you see where deeper cuts might happen or?
Well, I would suggest the first place that we we try to get to a point of understanding what is that acceptable level of deficit. At that point, what I would suggest looking specific places for cuts would be reexamining our capital projects, looking at things. Using Anne's term here, what is absolutely essential? I think we had some good discussion and in in thinking about it a little bit more from our last Business Functions meeting. I wonder if there's more room to look there. And I wonder if there's an opportunity to transfer some of those longer-term projects that we have slated for later years. Some of that money to the uncommitted fund balance so that we could use more of that. In these uncertainty, in in this time of uncertainty. The other place that I would suggest would be to start looking at personnel cuts this year. I know that that is very challenging to talk about and probably be very challenging for the board, let alone the staff to go down. But I don't really see another place where we could really look to make those types of adjustments. You know, my first desire would definitely be to see if we can offer any type of retirement incentive for any of our associations or bargaining units. To see if anybody would be willing to retire amidst this so that our younger professionals. And our younger employees and staff members can stay on, especially as they don't have retirement ability at this time. Because I know that we have seniority requirements for our staff, but that's really where I think we need to start looking. And you know, my instinct is that we have to start looking at that fast, but of course, that's the board's decision, it's not just my decision. But to answer your question, Sharon, that's where I would start.
Can I make a comment? In the webcast today, they spoke about furloughs. There's newer legislation out there and it's very complicated and it has to be a 60-day notice. For economic furlough, so we've never. We haven't been through that, we've were have been able over the years to not replace people. And that really has assisted with. Controlling our our spending in terms of staffing. So. We will have to talk with our solicitor. I'm not sure we're going to be able to do anything like that this year as far as, you know, economic furloughs. So and a lot of districts are in the same position. And wondering whether there would be any type of change to that, you know, an extension. But it may not be until next year that we're able to go through that process. Although. For other support staff, you know, that's a possibility for this, for 2021.
And just to get a quick clarification, when you say next year, are you talking about 2021 or are you talking about next school year?
2122 in order to come up with a furlough plan for 2122.
So what I what I heard you saying then is that there's legislation that legislature is considering. That would extend our restriction to furlough employees past the rest of.
No, their business managers are asking, is there anything out there that will extend it? And there is nothing right now.
So.
We're in a position where we're missing the window of economic furloughs.
When you spoke about 60 days, I mean, would that be 60 days before the school?
June 30th.
Sorry?
But 60 days before the end of the fiscal year.
For this year, but what about for next year, 20?
Next year, yes, we'd have to, that's pretty much my point. We'd have to plan for 2122 during next fiscal year.
Yeah, this is Dave. I'd just like to say that I'm having a kind of a hard time understanding. You know, when we talk about cutting staff, I'm trying to understand what staff we think are nonessential. At this point right now, I know we've been very careful about adding staff. And each year, I know our administrative team comes to us with suggestions for additional staff in different areas. And invariably, you know, we do not fulfill those those requests. So I know over time, when we've looked at reductions in staff, we've always relied upon attrition. And whenever we can. And but but not with the idea that there are, at this point. Staff that are that are sitting around that are are not. They're not providing necessary services that we have right now. So I I mean, this may, it may sound like a simple solution. And and obviously staffing costs are 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 highest of costs. I mean, that's what drives the budget primarily and it increases each year to staff, you know, in terms of the contractual obligations we have to pay. More each year, this this drives, you know, costs as well. But I I'm, I think it may be easier said than done for us as a board to sit there at some point. And execute a plan where where we're going to to be terminating staff. Systematically to be able to achieve our budget goals. I I think it's sort of a dangerous process. I think it it potentially undermines the quality of our school system. It undermines the reputation of our school system and I'm not sure if it's exactly what our community wants. I don't think, I mean, if I'm a, if I'm a community member and I'm faced with a possible. A budget increase of a 1.5 or 2.0 increase for the year versus. You know, a process to really start to reduce and eliminate programs that I care about. And and staff that I think are important. I I have, I have some real concerns about that and I'm not sure whether the direct, the direction that some folks are going. Is really reflective of what our our general community and our families and our our parents would really want to see happen to our school system. So I'd be very cautious to 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 go the route of a of a 0%. Simply because we're already going to have revenue shortages based upon Anne's description of some of the outcomes of the COVID-19. We're going to see reduction in state revenue and it means that at some point, in some way, local revenue may have to. Be what we rely on to really fund, you know, the district. So do I, do I like, do I savor the idea of a of a of a tax increase of any kind? No, I agree, this is not a very favorable time, but I look at the other consequences. And I don't want to see this district go into a deep hole and lose lose so much of what we tried to achieve over the years. So.
Well, if I I can just respond quick, Dave, first of all, I just appreciate you saying some of those things. And I think that there's a lot of agreement between you and I, maybe just a difference in outcome by what I'm suggesting at this point. You know, that what what Anne referred to in terms of a 60-day notification requirement before. The end of a school year or the beginning of a school year, I was not aware of that. So that certainly makes it more complicated, if possible at all, to try and furlough staff at this point. You know, I think though, that we also have to be responsible managers of the district. And if we are going to harm the bond rating by affecting, by permitting a larger. Deficit or, yeah, deficit for this year because of some of the revenue challenges that we're having. That's a very serious issue that I think is is worthy of acting upon. In regards to what you're suggesting about a tax increase as well, I don't think we could raise taxes to close our deficit at all in this year. Unless we went to the residence for a referendum vote and I sincerely doubt that they would support us going higher than the the index. So I think what we have to decide is what can we stomach in terms of both the tax increase? And our use of fund balance at the end of this year and we need to make cuts on the in-between. Because if we continue down this road, we are going to affect the ability for this district to pay employees to the best of our ability. What they're worth on the market and retain good staff. We're going to have, I think, trouble adding new programs as the years go by and there's additional need. I know one of the things that we've talked about several times at the board level and that we've heard before and that certainly is on my heart is. Is adding social workers to our our payroll and that's just not, you know, able to happen right now. But I think it's something that we want to see in the future. And and we don't know what else could be out there as the years go on. But if we don't start to address some of these challenges, and I think it's in a lot of ways precipitated by this crisis that we have to. Start and talk about them in this way right now. We are, I think, are doing a disservice to the community. And you know, it's our role, I think, as as directors of the district to see that vision for the long-term success of the district. And I I see this as a very challenging year for us. I'm not suggesting that these policy provisions are simple at all. They may be simple in the sense of if you cut staff, you have less wages to pay. But you know, I think I also recognize that there are tremendous amount of our employees that work for this district that also live in the community. And and that's not only affecting the morale of our employees, but also the morale of our community. But we have a lot of challenges right now and I think even before this, we are looking at having a structural deficit. And I think the five-year projection bears that out in very stark terms and we really need to get on top of this. And I I think that this virus only brings that up as a catalyst to maybe make some of these deeper cuts. And I think that we really need to look at some of those. And I I would be interested to find out if the only way that we could furlough employees at this point. Is through an economic furlough and not some other means, because I think we need to really seriously look at it. You know, I could be wrong, th- this is just my opinion, but that that's where I'm seeing the trends moving.
And I don't know the furlough law, maybe Dr. Phillips or Dr. Winters. Can speak to it, but you know, we will have to reach out to our solicitor, we've never had to use it, so.
I'm not aware of the 60-day rule, but I I am somewhat aware of the furlough process. And it does not require. Seniority, if I'm correct, right, Anne?
I I think it looks at evaluations first and then moves on to seniority. Again, I'm, you know, all of this is just so recent, within the past couple of days. The the talk among business officials about this issue, so. We need to find out more.
But that is certainly something we would investigate.
How many retirements do we have this year? I think I seem to remember four.
I think it's three. We have one redaction.
Yeah, I think there were four, but then we're going to resend one tonight.
Okay. Anne or or anybody, do we have the amount of those three that we'd be saving? And what are our plans? I mean, I'm assuming we're not going to replace any of those three.
One of the positions will not be filled.
One of the positions is a special ed teacher that has to be filled. And then the, I believe the other one, we're going to be able to not fill.
And when you say has to be filled because of?
Case load numbers. There are limits to how many students and a special education teacher can have on their caseload.
And these limits are set by?
The government. IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
But federal or state?
That's federal.
So now we're talking about saving two retire, two retirements. We're saving the money from two retirements that we wouldn't fill, backfill.
That would be correct.
And what what kind of, what kind of dollars are we talking about? It can't be very much.
$200,000, a good ballpark, Anne?
I've already, I did present that savings in the in the last.
I know you did, Anne, I'm sorry, Anne, I don't remember the numbers.
And maybe I'm struggling to to remember that number.
But it's not a ton of money.
No, it's not.
Yeah, okay.
You know, 125,000.
Yeah.
So it was four retirements, one not being filled, Bob, you referred to a second one not being filled?
The discussion that we had with the one position. Recently just happened that we're not going to fill, we've asked the principal to look at not filling it.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's a start, it's not going to, it's not going to put much of a dent in this year's budget. But it's a start to the kind of thinking that we are going to have to do from here on out. That when people retire, we simply say, good luck, enjoy your retirement, and then we cross off that position.
We have. You could do that up to a certain degree. I mean, if you have three third-grade classes at a school and and one of your third-grade teachers retires. You just can't run two classes unless you unless you're going to raise your class size well over our district policy maximum. So sometimes you can't do that. And when you can, and I think that's what we've always tried to do. I think when we have the attrition, when we have people leave, we always start to look at, you know, is this something, is this position needs to be replaced? And 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 when it's not, but it's not necessary, it's been done. And that's our, I think that's our practice and it's been our practice for the past several years, from what I understand.
But even when we do, like, we don't, we do replace a retirement, we, there, there are some savings there. Because of.
Sorry, yes, you're correct, there's a.
Right, right, you're hiring a new teacher at a lot less than the old teacher. So there is a bit of saving. So have we ever talked about having a retirement incentive situation?
We've had the, the last one was in, I believe, 2011, 12. And looking at those that, for looking at in terms of professionals. There are three others that are superannuated. In other words, they could get, receive full retirement and then there is a group of those. In other words, they could get, receive full retirement. And then there is a group of those that are in the bucket of 25 years, 55 years of age. And there's approximately eight of them. I don't think those staff members would bite at a retirement incentive because they'd be taking a penalty on their benefit. And having, being younger, uh, and having to, uh, pay healthcare is a real concern. It's even a concern of those who are superannuated will get the full retirement, that if they're having to assume healthcare costs, especially if they are, you know, have 35 years in and they're, you know, kind of not going to hit 65 for several years. So the, I, looking at that small number of three, um, you know, that's something, um, we could consider. And I'm not sure what the likelihood is. We can talk about that, uh, with, uh, Dr. Phillips and Dr. Winters.
Can I also ask, is there? And, and, you know, I, I, I understand throwing out a million ideas here is only going to be so easy to respond to. Um, and certainly not easy to, to research the implication of. But would there be any possibility of us looking to see if there are, um, employees who would be willing to go, um, on a part-time basis and keep benefits to reduce our overall payroll, um, so that we did not have to, uh, furlough, um, staff, uh, or, or specifically that we would have to, uh, use, I guess, you know, if we're, if we're using evaluations before seniority, that would be a a, a benefit, but that we didn't have to, um, lose some of our newest teachers, especially, in, in a situation where we'd be doing furloughs.
I mean, we certainly can, um, but that has some implications for benefits, as I believe implications for some tenure and peacers, based on how much money they're making. I'm su- sure all options are things that we can discuss.
Could you, could either of you let me know, um, does the Peasars' calculation look at the final three years of employment, or is it the largest three years of earnings?
Well, it's changed a little bit for new teachers and older teachers, but I believe, Anne, it's the highest three for teachers hired prior to a certain point. Was it two or three years ago when they started the new system?
Yeah, I'd have to refer to it to be absolutely sure on, because there are different rules now for different groups.
Well, for older teachers that might be considering retiring, it's what you said, Dr. Phillips, the highest three years of salary. And if a teacher were to go part-time, they're not going to get a full year credit with the retirement. So that would not be, you know, something I don't think a teacher would want to do.
So in, in the scenario you just laid out, Sharon, it would only be interested, it, it, it would only be biteable maybe for, for teachers who are superannuated, who are ready to retire if they could retain their benefits actively with the district. But they're just not working full-time because they already have all of their, uh, service requirements under the pension.
The pension is based on your average of your final three years, but also your years of service too. So if you work part-time, you might get half a year rather than a whole year. And that's also calculated into the amount that you would be receiving.
Buyouts I'm familiar with, um, had incentives like adding five years to a person's age, adding five years to a person's tenure. You had to be at least 55. Actually, they were quite, quite good benefits. There were five different points of the plan, and I, that was 25 years ago, so I don't remember what they are. What, what do we, what's our collective knowledge of what kinds of buyouts can be offered in the public school setting?
Are you asking what types of incentive? I mean, the last one that we offered, uh, was an amount of, um, really paying for their premiums for a three-year period. And at least eight professionals took advantage of that at least.
Yeah. And that was here at Exeter?
Yes.
Yeah, statewide, though, the last one would have been the Mellow Bill, the 30 and out, correct? That's been a few years ago.
So there, there is some there is some research, research and it's out there. I'm just wondering if somebody could pull all of that together so that we had a picture of some options that we could take.
That might be something we can get out of your business, Pasbo or the, uh, business group, Anne?
I can see what I, uh, what's available. I can ask, uh, on the forum, um, what's being considered in terms of incentives?
Yeah. And maybe when was the Exeter one you mentioned, Anne? How many years ago?
2011 or 2012?
Okay. So let's go back, maybe go back 10 years and gather that information statewide. Uh, and then we could, you know, we could have a little presentation about it.
Well, yeah, I think that was 2011 because I was on the board that year. But of those eight, weren't some of those, like, some of those received, uh, you know, an amount of money, but we're already going to be retiring, correct? So sometimes you get, you pay an incentive and the person was already gonna, going to retire, right?
Correct. But there was also the opportunity at that time not to fill a number of them. That was really where it was advantageous for the district. Whereas it incentive right now for three people that, and looking at those positions, maybe one we wouldn't fill. So, um, but I can, I'll do a little bit of research, do what I can find.
Great. Thanks, Anne.
I'm assuming this, this is going to be an ongoing kind of conversation, a really important focus that we have right now. I'm kind of sensing we want to wrap this up, this discussion up for this evening. Are there any final, uh, comments or thoughts before we move on into the agenda? Maybe I, I just need to ask, so, Mr. Ehrens, are you saying we're no longer at the $80 million goal that we were prepared to prepare? We need to, we need to re, go back and rehash this.
In terms of rehashing, I, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if that would be necessary. I, I think that we would have to go deeper than 80 million. I, I would say, first of all, hit that 80 million threshold. I know that you had identified, you, you know, your thoughts that you thought that we could get there. And, you know, I, I know that this, this creates a tremendous amount of strain. I appreciate that, but I would say that we need to go deeper. Um, you know, I, I haven't heard any specific concerns from board members about going deeper than that threshold. I know that there are some reservations about how we get there. You know? I, I'm reluctant to put out a number before we, before we have a, um, at least an understanding about where that fund balance could remain. Um, because we could come up with scenarios based on different tax, um, increases or lack thereof to see where that deficit is going to end up. But without knowing what that final deficit projection is, it, it's, it's hard for me to give you a number, but I would say below 80 million.
So, so the, I guess my question is the presentation that you expected at 80 million next week is, is not we're, we're going to have to go back and do a lot of extra work now. I just want to be sure, you're clear. I mean, we were ready to present a million. We're going to need a lot more discussion here, uh, not only amongst administration, but also the board direction of where those cuts and how deep those cuts need to be. For us to try and hit that number, whatever that goal is going to be.
Yeah, um, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with, with that, that second part of the presentation, um, not going forward at this point in, in light of this, but could we have a discussion at next week's meeting in lieu of that presentation that Anne was going to be given about maybe some further direction that the administration could get about specific areas that you guys have identified that you think that we would be supportive of digging deeper in. Um, I, I know that there's a lot of, um, uh, what's the word? Uh, maybe lack of direction from this. And, and I, I appreciate that.
That's fine. No, we have an administrative meeting set out there. We have some other meetings and, and we can, uh, we can dig deeper.
Yeah. And, and, you know, maybe it would be helpful, um, for you and I and, and maybe Anne as well to, to talk. And, and maybe I can give you some of my more detailed thoughts that might serve as a good direction ahead of next Tuesday. That might be able to frame the issue better. If, if you need anything from me, let me know.
Okay. And we have an administrative meeting tomorrow, so we'll, we'll dig, we'll dig in.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Anne, thanks for your presentation and thanks, board members, for your, your thoughts and your, and, and sharing your ideas as we make some difficult decisions here. We're going to move on in the agenda. We can take a quick look at that. Um, the next section of the agenda focuses on the minutes that we'll be approving next week for the, uh, workshop and voting, uh, meetings of, 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 uh, March. We have board policy that we'll be voting on next week. Some of it will be, uh, second reading. The, the second reading policies, I think, have all been given consideration. I think the only one that I see where there's maybe an outstanding question or comment came from, uh, Hunter or earlier on Policy 909 that addressed municipal government relations. And Hunter suggested that we, um, when they were addressing different, um, organizations within municipal government, they were talking about fire departments and Hunter suggested we add fire companies to that as well. And I think that's, um, a, a minor edit to that, but I think does reflect accurately how some departments are characterized as departments and others as companies. Looking at policies for first reading, the, um, the cyberbullying is a policy that we're supposed to be reviewing, uh, periodically and have a requirement to submit our, our updated policy with our, um, State Schools Report to PDE, um, in a couple of months. So it's, it's incumbent upon us at this point right now to kind of review the, the policy. It's been updated in 2018 by PSBA. And that update is on your, um, is available for you to review. All the others, again, some are, um, some are new. Uh, and others, um, are, are just being, uh, reviewed. I think it's relations with parents, with parent organizations is one that, um, was one of our own homebred policies. PSBA does not have a policy position on relations with parent organizations. So this is one where, uh, we want, um, you know, our administration and our solicitor to look at that particular policy carefully to determine whether that's still relevant or needs to be changed. PSBA will not offer advice on that particular policy. So, um, we'd like to say that we're very, very close to coming to the end of the policy manual. It's fantastic. I think we have one or two more policies that we have to go through and then we'll be, um, looking, um, at our, um, what we call our PNNs, which is the Pennsylvania News Network, uh, review of an update of policies on a, on a regular basis. So we'll be moving away from the, the broader, um, policy review process and into more specific policies as they're recommended, um, by PSBA. Any questions about any of the policies? Either second reading or first reading?
Yeah, Dave, just, um, since I'm, I'm still on a learning curve here, the difference between a policy that is in bold type versus one that is not in bold?
If you see bold, uh, Mr. Fiddler, it, it reflects, uh, likely reflects changes from the existing policy or, or new language. If you've seen, if you see something that's, uh, has a strikeout or a different color, that means that's edit work that we've done, um, either recommendations from the administration or the board, you know, for the policy.
Right. But what about one that's all bold?
That would, that most likely is a, either completely renovated or revised policy or a brand new policy.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments on?
Yes, Dave, with, with Policy 915, uh, you had said that. And tell me if I'm wrong, that, that might be removed or it's going to be reviewed again?
I'm not, I'm not anticipating we would eliminate the policy, but PSBA is not, this is not a policy that is, um, necessarily recommended, but if we find that it's useful, we should keep it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because there is wording in there that I thought was a little odd that could be tweaked. Is that something I should just talk to you about on the side?
Yeah, if you want to just send
In the first paragraph?
Yeah.
No, I, I'll just send you my recommendation. That's fine.
That would be great. Yeah.
Thank you.
Send to the Don, Donna Napoli or, uh, Superintendent Secretary. And, um, we'll review those with the policy committee and, uh, this is the time. Now's the time to kind of make the changes. I'm also hoping that, you know, our solicitor takes a look at it and make sure that this policy continues to meet the muster from, muster from a, uh, legal perspective. And, um, you know, also I think in, referenced in here are principals who oversee, and, and our athletic director that oversee the boosters and the principals who oversee the APT, organizations in terms of that relationship and, and any money, uh, and, and costs that are generated, I know. Anne manages, uh, I think, different accounts, uh, separate, separate standalone accounts for these organizations. And, um, we need to make sure that this policy is addressing that as well. So this is one for folks that I think to take a look at. Any other questions about policy here? Okay. Well, then we're going to move on to, uh, business functions, uh, Mr. Ehrens.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Uh, there are going to be two items that we'll be discussing at the voting meeting. The first is a property tax refund for property owned by Walmart. And the second is an issuance of debt specifically within that a parameters resolution that will, uh, detail our anticipated borrowing or, or, I'm sorry, issuance of, uh, reissuance of previous bond issues, um, that we're refinancing. That parameters resolution is going to be for the first stage of that, uh, timeline that Anne had briefly touched on at the end of her presentation. Um, and it's in, uh, line with the board's direction from the March 31st meeting.
Any questions on business function items? Okay, thanks, Mr. Ehrens. Uh, personal committee, Mrs. Wilson.
We are going to be, um, voting to rescind a retirement. And also, um, appointments. We're going, we have on there our new Director of People's Services, um, John Harris, and then also Special Education Learning Support Teacher at Lorraine. For next year, and then course requests.
Any questions on any of those items? Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. I'm going to move to student functions, Mrs. Stratton.
Next week we'll be voting on an agreement with Pediatric Services of America and also an ESW agreement with the Vista School.
Any questions there? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. We're going to move on to curriculum programs and curriculum committee, Dr. McLendon. You might be muted.
Sorry, I said all that and it
Sorry, I said all that and it was muted. Sorry. Okay, so next week, we'll be voting to authorize Assistant Superintendent to submit to PDE contingent on federal and state funding the following grants for the 2021 school year, Title 1, 2, 3, 4, and Ready to Learn Grants.
Any questions, any comments on the 2020-21 grant submission item? Okay, thanks, Dr. McLendon. Before we adjourn, I know, Joe Way, if you're still on our call, we were suggesting that you take another look and see if we have any comments or questions from members of the community. You want to let us know if anything is submitted?
I have none.
Okay. Thank you. So before we adjourn, I just want to announce that the board will be moving into an executive session. Board members, you should have received an email today that with a, with a link to the Zoom, Zoom Executive Session Meeting that will occur immediately after this. I'm suggesting we take a five minute break and then resume at about eight, I'll say 8:56, if you want to be that specific. Is everybody, does everybody have that link? Have they received that link and are able to get on? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So at this point, are there any final comments from, from board members who would like to be heard?
I do want to just say something really quick. You know, I think seeing some of our, the videos that have gone around on Facebook from our staffs at the different buildings, especially our faculty, but I know that our heart, the heart of our, our staff members and our support staff really stands with what the teachers and administrators are doing in those videos, which is really communicating how much they care about what they're doing, how much it's hard for them to be at home and not spending time with students, with each other, and, and how, how challenging this time is. And I don't think that's lost on any of us, and I, it's certainly not lost on me. And I just want to say thank you. And I know that we're going to be moving into some really challenging times that are definitely going to keep you guys on, on the top of our thoughts and our prayers. And I just want to echo that that is certainly true for me. And I, I certainly appreciate all the work that the staff are doing and the challenges that this presents for a lot of them.
And I, I should have said this one, Mrs. Moser gave her, Moser gave her presentation. But that followed our curriculum meeting where Dr. Winters outlined everything on a PowerPoint of what the buildings are doing and what the teachers are doing. So that was really helpful to have all the visuals and have pictures of the teachers and the children and everything that you're doing. So it kind of put the visual to what Dr. Winters had outlined and what schools going. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. I, I was listening to that meeting prior, so.
Okay.
I'm glad you made that connection.
Yeah, yeah.
So wanted to make a comment that the Citizens Advisory Committee is meeting this Thursday. Perhaps Dr. Winters gives you more information about how to attend that if people would like to. Everyone's home, so maybe this is a great time to attend if you haven't done that in the past. It seems like it snuck up on us a little bit because of the way that the weeks fell in April. I feel like it's usually after the voting meeting and, and this month it's before the vote meeting. So that's one thing. And Dr. Winters will give you a moment to speak about that. But I also wanted to mention that at the last voting meeting, I talked about Exeter Cares. And just wanted to let everyone that that website is up and running. And we also have a Facebook page, so if anyone needs any information about anything, primarily in Exeter, but it also goes beyond that that information is there. We've collaborated with the school, so there's some great educational resources on there. We just added a special education, special nation on there, starting to add some features on local businesses. So anything that you might need hopefully is on there. And if you have a suggestion, we talked about this last time, but our help gift there. So if you have a way that you can help, or if you would like some help, you can click on those links. If you have a business that needs to be featured, you can do that as well. So hopefully, you know, Exeter stays strong and, and we all help each other out. So, Dr. Winters, if you could talk about the meeting, that'd be great.
So Citizens Advisory Committee meeting is on Thursday, the 16th at nine o'clock. I had Mary Ann send out an invite today. We're going to be using Zoom. All of you as board members were invited. So if you did not receive that invite today, let me know and I can send you the Zoom link. We're going to be very briefly talking about a couple of items of old business. Talk about fundraising a little bit. Dr. Skacia from the community has kind of stepped in and is working on a tool that we could use that may help us kind of track and organize our fundraising. So he's going to talk a little bit about that. I communicated with him today. We're, we're going to be able to update you a little bit on a water filling station grant that ECEF has applied for on behalf of the district and where things are with that. And then Michelle and Dr. Phillips are going to be prepared to say a little bit more about Exeter Cares and some of the stuff that's going on with that website. So certainly encourage you, if you can join the meeting at nine, nine to 10, we'd love to have you participate.
Thank you, guys. Looking forward to that meeting. Any, any other final comments before we adjourn? Okay, just a reminder, we're going to be, I'll say, go ahead, Dr. Phillips.
No, no, I'm just going to say, Mr. Fiddler, everyone has gotten their survey. Mr. Campbell was listening to me speak. He did tell me that I didn't make any misstatements, so I guess what I said was what he wanted me to say. And you all have a copy of the survey now.
Great, thanks, Bob.
Yep.
Can I just say too, before Dave, I just want to say, you know, thank you again to all of our staff and our administration. I just think everything I see that's happening, Mrs. Moser, what you showed us tonight, it's amazing. And it shows what a great community we live in. And as does our Exeter Cares that we're reaching out and we're trying to reach out to everybody. So thank you, everybody, for all that you're doing. And that's why I also like, when we talk about our community, it's hard when we think about those that have lost their jobs and, you know, are going through a really difficult time right now. So I can't forget them either. So but thank you so much for everything. I know when I saw the junior high video last night, I was like crying. I don't know why. It was so funny and cute, but I, I teared up. I mean, it's awesome. So, thank you.
Yeah, Ann, you have your hand raised?
I was disagreeing. I was in tears last night, too.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Again, we're going to be reconvening an executive session for personnel and legal matters. And I would suggest now that we reconvene at about nine, 10. Give us 10 minutes to take a little break, clear heads, and we'll get back together. So, good night. Meetings adjourned. Thank you.